Okay. Can everybody hear us? Good evening, yes, okay. So I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting to order at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. First order of business is public comments. I don't see any. Next, we have new business and our first and only piece of business is consider adoption of the Declaration of Inclusion Initiative. And we have two visitors here tonight, Al Wakefield and Norman Cohen.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We absolutely can.
Okay, great. I'm Al Wakefield and the other voice, the guy with the white hair. The younger guy is Norman Cohen. And we're missing, we're missing Bob Harnish. Bob Harnish is the gentleman who who began this initiative, or at least who picked up on this initiative initially, started in Franklin, Vermont by someone who happened to be a relative of Bob's. Thought that the Declaration of Inclusion sounded like something that was valuable to do for Vermont, to bring it to Vermont because of an aging population, young folks leaving the state and not coming back and Vermont's need for these for people, which has been identified by the governor in several different, several different speeches. Such as, so Bob, Bob started it and got together with me and then subsequently with Norman to say, what do you think about taking this declaration to the entire state to say that we, we welcome all people here and especially those who are marginalized, who otherwise might feel not welcomed here. And that we will provide a safe and secure environment for people like me and like Norman and like Bob and like all of you, plus veterans and other so-called marginalized people. And so over the last two years, the three of us have been moving from town to town, making presentations, variations of what we're doing with you tonight to promote the Declaration of Inclusion. I'm going to presume that you've read it. It's in the guide which Bob sent to you. If you want me to read it, I can find it and read it to you, but I presume you have. If you haven't, let me know. But essentially, it says that we, we welcome people, all people to Vermont, identifies the marginalized people and says we will provide, as I said earlier, a safe, welcoming and secure environment. Over the last two years that the three of us have been, been doing this with, I might say, the vision that Vermont will become the leading state in the country for this, for welcoming people. And so we think we're well on the way because as of a couple of days ago, there are some 96 communities, towns, villages in Vermont that have adopted the Declaration of Inclusion that we recommended or one that they have come up with. And in just about every instance, the declarations that these towns have come up with supersede hours, they are more comprehensive. They talk more about how you begin to implement and how you begin to make inclusion real in their town. So we've been, we've been really, really pleased with, with the response responses that we've gotten as we move throughout the state. And so we come to you with the proposal for you to adopt the Declaration of Inclusion. And we're here essentially to answer any questions that you, that you have. And I'd like to thank Jeanette for putting this together and and Vicky for getting this started in Dover. So I can talk and talk and talk and I don't know what happened to Norman. He disappeared. You still there? Yeah, he disappeared. Ran out on me again. But I'm open for questions. I'd be pleased to answer any. We'd be pleased. I see he's coming back. Anything that you have on your mind that we can help to, help you to move this forward? And let me give, Norman's back. Let me give an opportunity to say anything that, that he feels is additive that I might have missed in this brief commentary.
Unfortunately, I missed most of it. Everybody got frozen. And so I had to sign out and sign back in. So I don't know exactly what you said. I'm sure you didn't miss much, but first of all, thank you for having us and for considering this proclamation with this declaration. Ninety-six towns have adopted it. We have a bunch of other towns that were before. We're hopeful to get to 100 by first week in May. I don't want to duplicate what Al said, so I think I'll just suggest you might find it interesting to read in our, on our website. The 202 proclamation of the governor establishing Inclusion Week. It really sets it out very clearly why it's so important. I don't, I suspect Al didn't mention this. We'll just mention in the summer of 2022, CNBC News did a study to determine the most desirable state in the nation to live in. And Vermont was chosen the most desirable state. It also pointed out Vermont's shortcoming. It was diversity. And diversity is our issue. And diversity is where the future needs to go to build this state to even a better position than it is. And perhaps keep it at least where it is, given the population difficulties that we're having. So I'm happy to take any questions. I'm sure Al is, and thank you again.
So members of the public probably do not know what the declaration says. So Sarah, you want to read it?
Sure.
And we can fill in Dover in this spot.
So the way it reads is sent to us in the town of Dover condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, age or disability, and wants everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a town, we formally condemn discrimination in all its forms, commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community, and will strive to ensure all our actions, policies and operating procedures reflect this commitment. The town of Dover is and will continue to be a place where individuals can live freely and express their opinions adopted this day.
Does anybody have any questions about, or concerns or?
Randy? So, yeah. For them that don't know me, that, yeah, I'm the chief of police in Dover. So I saw this many, many months ago going around and then when I saw on your agenda tonight, so I went back and I quickly looked for it and I went on their the website. So I just have a question. I think it's, I think it's a good thing. But I just had like, I guess, a couple of questions. I guess we need to the board, but I don't know if you've gone on to the website and read everything on there. I skimmed through it. And so I guess I don't, this may be to the question to, you know, the guests on Zoom. Is, you know, like part of it, and I just, like I said, I just skimmed through it. So I don't know if I'm right or wrong, or maybe misreading some of this. This is only gets a couple of pages. But with then, with some of these, like here, where it says in-depth inflammation, it goes that, you know, one of the things they may have to do is forming Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Then, you know, talks on more about that, goes review economic development, improvement, employment policies, arrange for implicit bias training for all city and town staff. Now, within the police department, that's, you know, we're obligated to do that anyway. We do that. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I just didn't know if the board, I gone to their website and really read all of this and if everything on your website by them adopting this gives mandating them to do this. So it's just a question. Again, I think it's, you know, it's a good thing, but I just don't know if the board is aware of maybe how much you may have to do by doing this, implementing some of their policies and all that other stuff. It was just a thought.
No, fair. And we'd like some feedback on that, please. Either Al or Norman.
Sure. I'll take the lead. It's totally a fair question. Recognize that this is totally voluntary. Nothing is mandated at all. That is, the whole spirit of this is that is welcoming, I think, in every aspect. And there's nothing that says you have to, in fact, do anything. Obviously, the spirit and intent of the decoration is, in fact, that you will do something among those things. And none of it is everything that you have to do. Among those things are some very low-hanging fruit kind of things, such as putting the decoration on your, on your website, perhaps putting a sign in your office where it says that we welcome all people, including it in any communications that you have. If you have a town newsletter, making mention of that in there and in the town's business development activities, certainly indicating that you're welcoming all people to come and make proposals and do business in town. And so you don't have to do any of it. Our police department here in Rutland, in fact, has, has looked at it. I'm involved with the police as a part of the subcommittee here in Rutland myself. And so they've looked at it and they've, they've bought into it. So nothing's mandated. It is all totally voluntary. The spirit of this is what what we ask you to think about and the intent of it is what we ask you to, to act on in one way or another. As to policies and procedures and all that, obviously, if you're hiring people and you're bringing in people as agents of the town to do things, you want to make sure that you you not only don't discriminate, but that you indicate to those vendors and those potential employees that that you welcome them, that you're open for them, that you invite them to come and bring their talents and their skills and whatever their assets are to, to your community. So fair question. I hope I've answered, and if I'm not, I can certainly talk more.
No, and like I said, for like, you know, I belong to the church next door and, you know, and they have something very similar where it says, you know, everybody's welcome, open and affirmative and so on and so forth. So like I said, it was a good thing. I just, like I said, I just skimmed through it real quick. And I wasn't sure what I was reading. Just wanted to make sure the select board was you know, up to date on, in what you said, no, you don't have to. So there you go. You can do what you want, when you want.
Just saying, one of the, I was just doing some background on Dover because Dover is one of the first towns that I visited when I came up from New York City 40 years ago. And I think you've got the largest population of Vietnam veterans in your town, in the, in the country. I'm sorry, in the state. I thought that was kind of interesting because one of the categories, one of the marginalized categories that some towns put in are veterans. It's not, it's not in our original, but it is in our original, but veterans as a marginalized community. So kind of interesting coincidence that you fall into, into that category.
Sarah, do you have a question?
I just was curious, the first sentence of the town condemns racism and, and then welcomes all persons. Why specify racism when there's obviously a lot of other things in there that would be just as troublesome with racism?
That's a good question, and we've certainly left it open to towns to modify as they, as they see appropriate. No, no one else has brought that, that up as, as, as a, as a point. Racism is probably the most conspicuous item, but we're talking about several different isms, if you will, among, of which racism may be the most on your mind, but certainly the other categories, the other marginalized communities that I mentioned, equal attention in every way. This is the original decoration that Franklin developed and the one that we've carried across the state, but no attempt to make racism number, number one. It really is discrimination against all of the categories. And Norm, go ahead.
I just had one question. I think that there was a missing group that we added some time ago. And I'm asking the chair of the select board, does the statement you read include socioeconomic status as a group?
No.
I would suggest you consider adding that that is the current. We made that change several months ago, but somehow it hasn't gotten to all the paper. And most towns who have adopted in the last four or five months have included socioeconomic status.
Do you know where they put that exactly in the line?
Yes, after the word disability, comma, or socioeconomic status, comma.
Does anybody, any other questions or comments about this? Sarah, are you suggesting we should remove condemnance for racism and just say the town of Dover welcomes all persons?
I'll make a motion. And add socioeconomic. So I make a motion that the select board sign the Declaration of Inclusion, amended to remove the words condemns racism and adding the words socioeconomic status immediately following the words age or disability.
Second. Any further conversation? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Ready to man stop? Can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
No, yeah, very good. All right. Well, thank you for bringing this to us. And we will do, probably do some of that low hanging fruit. Pretty quickly, we have people who do that kind of thing around here. So we appreciate that. Yes, Norm?
Yes, just one brief thing. We'd appreciate it if you would send us by email a signed copy.
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to have a clean copy because it's kind of been edited slightly. So when we get it signed, we will, we will, the net will send one.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you tonight. Have a great meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
So Jeanette, could you have that read? I'm trying to read it right now.
We'll have it in word, yes?
Yep. I mean, I'll do a word now. So we could just, we could just sign it for Wednesday night. And we'll just have it done.
Okay.
Okay. Does that make sense? We'll be at pretown meeting Wednesday night anyway, so.
Okay, we'll be on to Highway. Travis, request to hire new road crew member.
Yes. So a few weeks ago, probably three weeks ago now anyways, one of our hires, Brian Hestock, decided that we'll this job looking correct. And he gave his notice, so I reached out to my liaison and a couple of other board members and we decided to, they gave me the okay to hire within the realm applicants that we got last fall. And I thought that I knew one that was fit to put a position. And he was still interested in it. So I'd like to hire Gary Barcom effective tomorrow for $21 per hour. He goes out of CDO, he lives in New Fane.
And he's done some initial and free entries things. Do you have any comments about hiring Gary Barcom before this snowy week progresses? Was 21 what Ryan had been at?
No.
No.
He didn't have.
Oh, he didn't have. But you know, funny.
The other research, not the same as well.
The other reason.
Yeah. As the other.
Any other comments? Somebody want to make a motion? I make a motion, we authorize Travis to fire Gary Barcom at a rate of $21 per hour effective tomorrow. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. That was quite, that was. So good. I love you.
Very excited.
Good. Next, we're going to consider a gravel pit purchase in Jamaica. It's under pilot. So Travis, do you want to start us off?
Um, I never did get to talk or meet with Jenny yet, but I, I had talked to Mike Fitzpatrick a little bit about gravel pit that they have up in Jamaica on the Ford a bit. I looked over some of the some of the stuff that we had some information to pass along to Jeanette. I guess I'm curious to see what she has to say about it.
So you're passing it over to Jenny?
Yeah.
Do you want to talk to everybody?
Yes. The land consists of two lots. One lot is 134.37 acres. That has a gravel pit. It has about a half a mile of gravel road already into it. It has power on the property and has wells. So all that was done because at one point they were going to go through Act 250 to get as an active gravel pit. I've since found out that their attorney was Tim O'Connor. Tim O'Connor is referenced with Sarah Bangle from Costello. And I approached her blog paperwork because evidently Tim had communicated with Mike that it was granted. So we're still waiting for the files. We've sent her three emails. I haven't heard back yet. But that's the main property that has a gravel pit is 134.37 acres. The other property that is attached to it is about 67 acres, but it has mostly, most of the forest pond on it, 11.3 acre forest apart, is almost entirely on that piece. It doesn't have any gravel on it. So it's not something that has to be purchased together. Together, it's $1,499. The 67 acres is $649.9. And the land with the gravel pit is $949. Now, as Vicky probably knows, I'm not advertising it as that because of the lack of residential property. Real estate industry here, Range Shore, houses, Estella, what have you. So because it's two point miles, two point, two miles to the side of Stratton Sun Bowl, you know, it's it's a good piece of property for development. We have had some interest from Boulder Ridge. I have met with Stratton. Evidently, they're probably not interested in what I found out. So I have sent it out to a number of other towns. I do know that Hotney and Dumson have purchased a gravel pit together. I know New Fane is in the process of acquiring an active permit to activate a gravel pit that they want to purchase. So that's about it. The cost of gravel, if you, you can tell more about that. And this also involves the cost of trucking it. And I guess some of them are trucking from New Hampshire, some are trucking from Massachusetts. And of course, the cost is only going to rise over the years coming. And, you know, nothing goes down and we're looking at things rising substantially, especially in that, that field. So I just thought maybe I could give you guys an incentive. And that's it. But he probably knows best whether or not we should.
Well, we don't know much about buying property in another town. We don't know much about owning and permitting and running a gravel pit, correct? We, so we would have a lot of questions. We would want to know how much gravel, is there sand on the property? Is it just gravel? We want to have some geology done. We want to have some engineering done. And this is the kind of thing that we would be, we don't move fast on this. No, the towns just don't. You've got to look at all your, do all your homework. And there could be a big outlay of front-end, front-end costs trying to get that done. So and it's something we would want to also talk to the, you know, the voters about because buying a large tract of land in another town is not something that we, to my knowledge, have, had. So I understand gravel, sand, all that is becoming a really hot commodity. And it's something that we need to pay attention to. But why don't we bring this up? If there's interest by the board and that, you know, pretown meeting and town meeting under other business, so we can get it out there. People could hear if there's any you know, we could hear if there's any interest amongst the voters.
Say, do you want to go out? You know where it is?
I have an idea.
It's, it's right off of Forest, sir. And you can tell because no trespassing, it's got a big American flag. And it goes even quite a ways. So take it right in. I don't know about, they have been keeping it plowed.
Yeah.
And, you know, of course, out before the snowstorm, it was probably easy to get in there, but we went there and there was a lot of snow. Able to get in because they haven't given plow. So if you want to go in, take a look. There's two areas when you go into the room, dissect them. One is here and one is here.
So but we do appreciate you bringing it to us because, yes, towns are looking for ways to improve both the access and the cost of those materials and, but it's a, this is a pretty big project, price tag, resources. So
there's a lot of due diligence.
Yes, there is. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Or any other comments? I just would ask Travis, is this something that I mean, think is critical, important, nice to have, or don't really have an opinion yet?
I don't have an opinion yet. I I guess I'd like to do a little more research on it myself. And and make some phone calls on it and, you know, just see what I have an idea. You could have a lot of, if there's any, you can turn on any of us, like a lot.
And we don't know how much there is.
Yeah.
So we have, we have to put in a fair investment before we. I'm getting the feeling that that could be, so. And as I said, we would want to do, exchange, just said, our due diligence and find out everything that we could.
Yeah.
But thank you.
I do appreciate that.
Yes. Ah, next order of business, consider Richard Sedlake for handling a freon in the appliances at the transfer station. So right now, I believe we have a company that comes and does it. They come and maybe Travis can sort of how that works.
Oh, yeah. I have, I left that up to Chris. He called down to Waste Management and talked to them. And they have somebody that they use down there. He calls them, they come. I don't mind hiring a local person. I'm not against it, but I just, you know, he has somebody that he works with already. You know, it's the same price. They're insured to be for doing this as far as like something happened on our property. You know, I I don't mind putting him on the list and, you know, having him do some. If Chris can't get a hold of the people or whatever, but I feel like I just kind of left it up to Chris to hire whoever he thought was best. You know, he's the one that calls them and interacts.
They require you to have at least 25 appliances before they come up here.
Yeah.
So that means it's going to be 25 refrigerators, but handing around before they're empty and then you can throw them in the refrigerator.
Yeah. So that was the reason why I thought, said my point, I would probably put six of them in. Yeah.
Sarah. When there are appliances, is there, is there like a minimum number you want before you call to have them taken away because of?
I have, we have a staging area and then I have a separate staging area I made for Chris, you know, right there across from transportation and we move them up. They stay there until we have enough and then he just takes care of it. And then once their company comes, their market will pop.
Well, my question though is, is there, is there like, if you had the opportunity to get rid of three at a time or four at a time, would that make sense? Or does it make sense to actually wait until you have 10 or 15? Like because of a calling or something like?
No, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter one way or the other. I, we have had, we've only ran into it once where they had marked a bunch of them and we couldn't fit them all in the metal dumpster because we were waiting in the metal dumpster to be dumped. But once the new box came. We have the remainder in.
Anything else?
Sarah. If Chris is working from a list. And he's, you know, he has a company that he's working with, but he has, I don't see a reason why Richard could be on the list. And just. That way and then Chris would work with whoever.
Oh, yeah.
Reach and do it like that.
For sure.
Not switch, just make it in there.
Absolutely.
And we would wanna make sure that even to be on the list, that person. Whoever it would be. Would have insurance, have a certification, have a stick, have the properties, all that available, um, as as a potential, um. Freon removal. Service, most specifically. But it sounds like. What's working that, what you've got working now and Chris is comfortable with it, you know, you, you don't have to get too involved in it.
Right.
Um, I don't know why we necessarily change.
Just another option.
Absolutely.
And we, maybe we can get all that information.
Yeah, I, I got that in, I got that through contact and.
And all the certifications and. And insurance and.
Uh, no, no, not that, but.
So if we have all that, then you can put it on the list.
Yeah.
Great. Good, everybody good with that?
Hmm.
Scott, you good with that? All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Westover Fire Department. Is Rich planning to be here tonight?
Don't know.
So tell me, skip over this for right now. Okay, so let's, let's pass over the Westover Fire Department, do pickup truck for me, just because I don't know. Um, I mean.
It's not coming to label.
Well, we, I don't, I don't, I don't know. We are way for, way. Way for rich. So economic development, we're gonna talk uh, about the update on Valley Trail A minus options and Eric is here with us tonight.
Hey, guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I had a conversation with Ross Cohen from the Vermont Department of Transportation. Um, he did tell us that we can wait until. Shortly after a town meeting to make a decision on what we're gonna do. Um, we're just gonna wanna have a discussion about it at town meeting and then make a decision that at at the meeting shortly thereafter on how we're gonna proceed. There are no. Uh, there are no programs open right now for additional money. Um, he, he expects them to be open, um, similar to as they are each year, however. Uh, the program that we got to be a part of the first time around was um, a ten percent match on our part, right? So uh, we got a total grant or, you know, project of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, they were gonna give us two hundred and ninety-five for whatever it was of it. We were gonna pay the rest with that ten percent match. Uh, this time around, any new funding programs that they've announced. Actually require a twenty percent match. Uh, so that's something to consider as well. Um, but at this point, uh, there's not, you know, it's not. Do or die time. Um, we can have a conversation about it at town meeting. Uh, I will make sure that Rich knows I'd like to do that uh, at the meeting and can can answer any questions or. Or comments there and then shortly after, you know, at a, at a following meeting, we can make a decision on how we'd like to proceed, but that's my update for now.
If you have any questions to the. There, there are basically done now and we can wait and. And here, being back at town meeting, then maybe, we'll be meeting the night after town meeting anyway, so we can have it on that agenda. Right, our real sensational meeting should be that Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes. So, good. Well, thank you. Anything else? Economic development related?
Uh, just had a meeting today with uh, our contractors for Horace Hill. Uh, it was a super awesome and productive uh, meeting and. We're, we're scheduling times to get everybody on the property and get the design and. You know, once we get approval from two fifty, we'll get some shovels in the ground this spring and summer.
Anything, anybody have anything for Eric? There is nothing, thank you, Eric. Okay. Next, we're gonna move into the Board of Liquor Control. If I could have a motion, please, motion going to the Board of Liquor Control? All in favor? We're consider authorizing Andy McLean and Jeanette Eckert to approve request to cater permits as needed. So uh, maybe you can just give us the quick rundown on why this, this. Might be a good change for us, Andy, um, in terms of expediting uh, catering permits?
Sure, so. Um, basically. All liquor licenses require your approval. And. Sometimes a local business will run into an issue. Getting that uh, permit in front of you in time to have their event. Um. So a catering. So basically. You know, you meet twice a month. Um, so you're looking at three weeks. Um, lead time. Um, but then the, after you're done with it, it goes up to DLC and they have to approve it. Um, if it's a month, if it falls where you have those, you know, a couple of weeks between meetings. Then it can be, you know, more like four weeks lead time. And we've run into situations where, say, a, a small business, you know, the new, um. The new, the folks who bought Sandy's place wanna have a little thing and. And they don't get their application uh, to us in time to warn it for your meeting, to get everything approved for their event. Um. There are people in town who are licensed caterers. Um, Deerfield Bar and Bottle comes to mind. Um, a request to cater. Is a liquor license approved typically by you folks. Where a licensed caterer uh, comes in and serves alcohol at the event. Um, these folks are known quantities, they already have the license. They're used to operating in places other than their own premises. Um, and it's the kind of application where. You typically wouldn't um, exercise a lot of discretion. You know, do you have the, you know, catering license and, you know, basically that's it. It's not really like. Wine and Harvest Festival where, you know, Randy might wanna see a map of the place and how they're gonna segregate. You know, the serving area from the general public and all this kinda stuff. And there are other towns in Vermont. Uh, whose select boards have authorized the town clerk and or the assistant town clerk to sign off on these. As an administrative approval. Um. Which would solve this problem, so you know, the, the folks who bought Sandy's wanna do this thing, they don't have the proper liquor license. There's no time to get a special event permit. Um, they could hire. Um, one of these known quantities who have done events in town and have had requests to cater approved many times by you guys. They could hire them, they come in, serve the alcohol, they're all trained, have the proper li- licensing, they're not gonna over serve people. We can be pretty confident about it. It would help some of our small businesses when they get in a time crunch. Other towns have done it, not every town does it. Um, and I thought it would be nice in Dover. Um, if Jeanette and I had that, that ability.
Thoughts? Um, so why?
Do you have a thought on that? You think I do?
Um, yes, I'm in favor of it because it seems. The timing always seems to be an issue. Um, between getting it to you folks prior to an event.
Dan?
I used to service when we did barter at the. Where Eric Terris from uh. Broad House had a catering license. And he filled out the form and brought it to Andy, he sent it up to DLC. Eric for the out of one. Event at the town hall, and it runs further smoothly. Think it was a nice project.
Randy, do you have any issues with this?
No, it's probably a good thing. I'm sitting here thinking, you know, gee, would there be an issue? I don't think so. Other than if they were back cater, if they were back cater, I think DLC would deal with it. So, you know, so I, I, I think if it's something that can help along the, the business to move along and. Yeah, I, that's stuck in my head, I can't think of a reason not to, I guess.
Well, does somebody wanna make a motion?
Do we need to sign something or we just give them the law of the section?
I think we just make a motion and then. And should we have it be Andy McLean and Jeanette Eckert or should we do it the town clerk and the assistant town clerk?
I think that's probably.
That would probably be better.
The town clerk and assistant town clerk approve requests to give permits as needed. So. All in favor? Okay. Now, our license renewals. We have. Uh, yes, there uh. As presented, well, you can, if you want any in the motions, Sarah, do all of these before.
And what liquor license you're looking for?
Okay, so uh, what, not good?
No, I was just gonna explain, maybe Andy wants to explain that the whole system has changed with DLC.
Okay.
So it all goes through their online portal now. Um, so. We, and we get notified, yeah, so you folks don't sign anymore? Um, we just need a motion for you to screen out. And there are several things that folks, because it was all new to the establishments as well. Um, there've been some bugs that need to be worked out, but um, so there are a few that. We're still waiting on like their seminar certificate or. Uh, fire inspection or or other things, or their payment, because they still have to come in physically and pay the town payment to us. The rest goes on, they can do on the portal. Um. So if you could, if your motion could be to authorize. Authorize these or prove them pending receipt of the recognition. So, and Randy, have you seen the list of the?
Uh, no, this is the first, I just totally now go on online.
So his list is that you.
He hasn't seen them, so that's.
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, the only, the only one, and I just. And I saw it today and we, we started, I think, we've been having issues with the Snow Republic again. With their parking and stuff and um. I think it's got resolved. I haven't gone down and chatted with them yet because it's stuff that's just been happening recently and I haven't. Realized that the licenses are coming up, so. I would say that go ahead and, and deal with it, there's, I can always contact DLC directly. And I believe they can deal with it. On a more immediate issue or something like that, or we can just deal with it.
It, 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 it's, I think that in particularly with that property. They really ought to consider having a parking attendant because Sunday afternoon I drove South Number one hundred and cars were darting in, darting out. There was, people were parking across the street at the utility. Well, at, at the spot where there's that substation thing, you know, people were. The parking lot was full of cars trying to move and nobody could move. It was, it was, I mean, TC's has a small lot, they have a parking attendant. Things move efficiently in there up there. They get every parking space they possibly can.
So I think you can go ahead and, and put that on here that, that they do, and I think that was back over a year or two ago when I had that conversation with them. Because with parking and the guy was like, well, it's not my problem, you know, to park in one, and I go, no, it really is. Yeah, and then it happened, I think a couple of times over. I can't remember, I think it was one, when there's that, and they're literally parking right there by the no parking sign. And Sam went in there, talked long and I forget who was in there and. Tow trucks and. Well, well, you know, you do, but the problem is as long as you get a tow truck, they're gonna be, and, and so it's, Sam has in the past. Has not allowed people to move their car until they all contributed to the tow truck person. So, you know, there is that, so I think if that's something that you wanna do, you can try that this year and they can go with it, that they have to have one on. Weeks or something like that, then you can do that.
The, I, I was really concerned because if there was a fire there, the cars couldn't move. There were so many cars in that lot that were. Blocked by other cars trying to try to come in and cars going out. It was just a jumble. Of cars.
They have an approved parking plan as their, as their permit for twenty-one or twenty-two cars maximum. That's all their permitted.
Yep, so you could then, whoever is that, that's tabby then, that does that, that's not us. So it's whatever board gives them that permit. Yeah, and that's, they can go after them with, you know, that, that aspect too, so. Yeah, from my understanding, you guys can put any stipulation you want. So, and, and evidence.
Okay.
Okay, so, um.
I have one question.
Yes.
Actually, that's Bar and Grill.
Bar and Grill.
So I make a motion that we approve the liquor license renewals as follows. Sono Bar and Table. Um, first, third, and O C P. Outside consumption permit. Two dogs LLC, first, third, and outside consumption, consumption permit. Alpine Kitchen LLC or Trail eighty-seven, first, third, and outside consumption permit. And A Nice LLC, Snow Mountain Market, second, and tobacco permit.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, Sarah.
Yes, Jeanette.
Pending.
Pending. A pending receipt of any missing documents or approvals.
Second, second, the finished motion. All in favor?
All aye.
To unanimous, okay. That leaves us with Snow Republic, first and third class.
I just, I, I, it, it is very dangerous and it's, and it's the kind of thing that it's an immediate. Danger, like, it, it happens and then you're in the midst of trying to deal with it and there's dozens of people in there. Way more cars than there are supposed to be and if they don't have a parking attendant, there's no way that they're gonna keep that parking lot. To the side, you know, to fill the way it's supposed to be filled. And only the number of cars that they're supposed to have in there. I hate the idea of being like. Mean to a business, but. They're putting people at risk. And this, Vicki's right, if they do have a fire. I don't know if the trucks can get in, but the cars can't get out.
Okay, first, Dan.
Is it a zoning issue? There's only allowed that twenty-one cars and you have more cars, is it a zoning?
They're, they're. Their permit says twenty-one parking. Yeah, it's part of, well, it was conditional use, so they had to come to the Development Review Board to get their permit. One of the conditions of their permit was that number of parking spaces. So their permit is condi- conditioned on that.
Okay, so what's the violation if they go beyond with their?
They, they have, they're out of compliance with their permit.
Sarah. The DRB does not have any enforcement power and would be zoning. And she makes. The person in the utility managing position makes sure that the permits. Yeah, so Randy, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, and, and I think I may have reached my own question, but it's not gonna be owners down there, right? Is it still, what's his grants, whatever the name is? That's who I dealt with.
Walt Vansley.
Yeah, okay, so it's still him, yes. The only other thing I would say is, I'm almost a hundred percent sure you guys can bring stipulations you want on it. If you're thinking of one. I can or Jeanette can, just reach out to someone from E O S. Whether they're calling or they can.
I, those are for the new renewals. Oh, okay, one, let. You know that, Andy, and one, one, one end of April, okay.
So Randy's correct. I just wanted to say Randy's correct. You guys can put conditions on these permits if you want.
Okay.
So. I would like to put up. A condition that. Do you, do you wanna say, I don't wanna say across the board, but any weekend or holiday period. To ensure that there are only twenty-one or the permanent amount of cars, the permanent amount of cars and parking spaces. Well, and realistically, that they're not parking, they, they, people are notified that they're parking in a no parking zone and that they shouldn't be there.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that little um, substation is actually a legal parking spot for. Snow Republican. Yes, Andy?
So, um, it occurred to me that, um, these liquor licenses aren't, uh, expiring, their current ones aren't expiring for a while. Uh, is it the end of April, Jeanette, I believe?
Yeah, it's April thirtieth.
Um, maybe in light of that, maybe it'd be a good idea to invite Walt to one of your meetings, express these things and try and work out conditions that, um, that would work between Randy, you guys, and Walt, just an idea.
Cause she's gonna have to be the, um, enforcement arm, the zoning administrator, if it's not carried out, yes.
So Tabby would enforce, uh, their zoning permit, right? She can write tickets, I think up to a hundred bucks a day, but um, the violation probably goes away that night, so probably be a hundred dollar tickets. Um, and, you know, if they're in violation of their permit and she determines that, she could probably shut them down, but as well, she won't be enforcing, uh, conditions you put on this permit. Um, the DLC would. And, uh, I don't, I don't know, Randy, what your relationship is with, you know, liquor licenses and whether you can enforce anything, but that, that wouldn't be Tabby, it'd be DLC, as far as I know.
Come back to that right now?
Yeah, I, 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 I think you can, I'm not sure, I think actually what we would do is we write it up, I'd have to double check, I think we would write it up, send it off to, you know, to one of their, uh, investigators and, and stuff, yeah. And I think they cite it under, under a statute. And I see a lot of things going on, I'm, I'm not so sure I'd have to double check.
So if they fall off on the street or purchase a street regular substation, then it's nothing to do with them, that's a standard issue, isn't it?
So with the substation back when this was happening a couple of years ago, I talked to, and I think it was Linda Hall there at that point, and they were aware of it. If I remember correctly, they weren't really for or against it, they weren't putting anything up, but what they did do, if you go down and look, I think they put up those metal posts or whatever that you hit, so they put it like in front of their equipment that's outside, so if someone went and they weren't gonna hit it, they pick one of those in-ground cement posts.
Isn't that trespassing?
Oh, well, only if they had it signed up there, it's a trespass.
But I noticed also, on my, just one drive down Route One Hundred, people were using the boot and binding building as a turnaround, try to turn around and go around because you can't park there, so you wanna go there, so you, everybody's turning around in the same residential property, which is also
Yeah, I think it was the second, I think the third time, I think Sam was down there one night that he actually had them stop the music, he got on the PA and talked to the patrons directly. And then they all strangled out and
So I think the invitation idea is not a bad idea, we'll try that. So, um, we would need somebody to reach out to, to him and see if he wants to at least entertain, you know, come by via Zoom, Andy.
I'm happy to do that for you, if you want.
Thank you, thank you. So we're, there's no action tonight.
So, Snow Republic has not been
No action. Anything else on the Board of Liquor Control? Did I have a motion to move out? All right. Uh, so now we're back at the Fire Department vehicle. He wants, he wants to consider us purchasing what was very close to what he ideally wanted, I think it was a short bed and not a long bed. From Autumn Wall for sixty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars, with the money coming from the Capital Reserve Fund. It's scheduled to arrive on April nineteenth. Yeah, we have money in the Capital Equipment Fund. I, I know, I just, I kinda wish he was here to say whatever.
I saw him the other day, he had attention to being inside of him, cause he mentioned his
Well, I mean, if we do have all the specs and everything, and he's, he's happy with it, so uh, it's hard to find these exact kind of truck matches to needs these days. So I guess if the board feels comfortable without any further discussion, he could discuss it with us at the last meeting. We could approve this. It, 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 it wasn't an order, it was one that was gonna just, was in production and it was gonna fill up at Autumn. All right, so I make a motion that we approve the expenditure of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars for purchasing two thousand, twenty-three GMC Sierra SLE Crew Cap Diesel for the Fire Department. Many, the quote, quote does not include tax or state fees, so we need to put that more in for that, or is that? All right, so any other discussion about the Fire Department pickup truck? Uh, yes, Jeanette? No. I don't believe so. They don't have a pickup truck, they have a, they do? But I don't know when they're doing that.
It was the, it was, uh, the old main, our old main truck.
Oh, right, oh, I was completely
Forage, but I can say his, I believe his intentions were to uh, sell that vehicle. It's gonna be worth more, I think, private sale.
Yeah, that's the kinda question I wish we Yeah. They won't affect the price of this, right? No, it's dropping on the nineteenth.
Well, has he, has he, what are they specifically?
It's coming on the nineteenth of April.
It's right, I mean, it's coming to the autumn, but is it specifically?
Well, they were holding this price and holding his, he's basically saying he wants to buy it for the board to approve it. So, um, let's approve it. And also add that we wanted, that the board wants to know what the status of the truck that it is replacing is gonna be. So we need that, we need to amend the motion? Yes. I amend the motion to, um, include, uh, requests from the Select Board that this, the disposal of the, that we be providing with information about the disposal of the truck that was replaced. Everybody happy? All in favor? Okay. Uh, yes, I have the words for it. So we have the minutes, consent agenda, the minutes of February seventh, we had, um, everybody in attendance. So is somebody wanna make a motion to whatever it was? I'm like, no, we did not, we only had three people. So I make a motion that we approve the minutes of February seventh. All in favor? I make a motion to approve the minutes of February ninth. Well, who was there? Joe, Vicky, Sarah. And Joe seconded it. And we had two accidents, so all in favor? And Scott, are you abstaining? Yes, and Dan abstaining. Okay, then we have the warrants, super warrants of February eighteenth for two million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Any questions, concerns? All in favor? Okay, we have FYI, the Municipal Energy Resiliency Program overview.
I don't know, I think I forwarded that email to you. There are two levels, I mean, it's still a work in progress, but there, there's two levels of audits that can happen to a town building, um, each municipality can apply for a maximum of five hundred thousand for building renovation projects.
And we're not in the hot pot here.
No, a lot of our neighbors are. Yeah, so that was disappointing, but anyways. Um, and also I, Sarah did revise that Declaration of Inclusion, which I just didn't do that, do you want to sign that tonight or you want?
We, we can do it tonight, okay, if it's good, did we double check it?
Will I put your signature on it, Scott?
You can, can you come in and start and sign this? Scott, um, can you come in and sign that? Cause I think it's important to have a whole board up, have signatures on it. Not tonight, like, no. All right, we also have the open mic night on February twenty-second, which is tomorrow night at six P M. At the Dover Town Hall. Uh, we have school district voting, February twenty-seventh, from ten A M to seven P M at Dover Town Hall. And we also have pre-town meeting next Wednesday, not Tuesday, Wednesday, March first, at six o'clock at Dover Town Hall. Now, Hall's getting a big workout. We have town meeting at the Dover Town Hall on Tuesday, March seventh at ten A M. And I think we're gonna have a lunch provided by the sixth graders, as far as I know, which is free to anybody who's there. And some, probably some girls' down cookies for sale. And we have the Select Board Reorganizational Meeting, Wednesday, March eighth at six thirty P M. Right here, is everybody gonna be able to make that, assuming, um, you're elected, Scott?
We don't have a, do we have a meeting candidate night or we?
So we didn't give her. Do we have any liaison reports? I have a comment for, actually for Scott, there's, there appears to be money in the state. There appears to be money available through the state for library upgrades. And it's possible that that could include things like physical plant. So perhaps you could get with John and talk about digging into that a little bit, I, I called Laura about it and I got a little bit of information. Um, but there's rather substantial amount of money, um, that's been put aside for the library. Specifically for libraries.
Sit down over and I'll, we'll get digging on that.
Okay, yeah, I have, I have the email somewhere. Any other liaison reports? I don't think we need an executive session. I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-three P M. Nice, I liked. I think it's a really nice town. So, so, I didn't, so, Andy sent over for the warning in the newspaper this week, of the town meeting warning. Said select none, not, this, the countercourt select says select four. So I changed it all to select four. Yeah, I checked, I pulled up the town report and said
We, we were looking for it today.
You have time for a dumb question? So assuming they sell that pickup truck for five thousand dollars, just your number, does that go back into the Capital Equipment Fund?
It goes in back into the town hall.